I'm going to call the regional meeting to order if you stand for the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all. Susan Lee Hopwell.
Christine Aron, Priscilla Patel, Cheryl Fiducia, Marney Alvera, Anna Collin, Robert Hespach,
here.
Massie Newt, Rexanne Bowne-Court. District meeting, public hearing, Regional School District Number 16, towns of Beacon Falls and Prospect, March 6, 2014. The electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the towns of Beacon Falls and Prospect are hereby barred for the public meeting. The Regional School District Number 16 will be held at Woodland Regional High School in Brooklyn Falls, Connecticut on Thursday, March 6, 2014, at 7:00 PM. The purpose of conducting the public hearing is to follow recommendations of the Board of Education. One, that $1,955,000 be appropriated for costs related to district-wide school security improvements that district office, Woodland High School, Long River Middle School, Lower ledge School, Community School, and Algonquin School. The appropriation may be spent for the acquisition and installation of equipment, furnishings, and materials, and site improvements, including the not limited to duress site, alert systems, alarms, remote software, displays, and computers, servers, and storage, FastPass identification systems, new digital camera systems, audio/intercom systems, radios, operating exterior lighting, door, left base, access controls, doors, camera-resistant glass, window, replacement window film, weather equipment, fencing, generators, training, legal fees, net interest on borrowings, other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project. The Board of Education is authorized to determine the scope and particulars of the project. The Board of Education may be required or not have the scope of the project, and the entire appropriation may be spent on the project as so reduced or modified. Number two, that $1,955,000 bonds and temporary notes of the district be authorized to finance the appropriation. The amount of the bonds or notes authorized shall be reduced by the amount of grants received by the district for the project and applied to defray project costs. Number three, that the Board of Education or such other officer or body delegated by the Board be authorized to require the district and its member towns to comply with applicable federal income tax requirements for tax-exempt bonds. Number four, that the Board of Education or such other officer or body delegated by the Board be authorized to make representations and into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information. Number five, that the Board of Education is authorized to approve the entry into a contracts for the project, and the Board of Education or such officer or body to whom the Board delegates such authority is authorized to approve the expenditure of said appropriation and such other matters as it means desirable or necessary to complete the project. Number six, that the bond and temporary note authorization be submitted to referendum vote by the electors and citizens qualified to vote in the districts and the towns of the district. Number seven, the superintendent of Regional School District Number 16, the chairman and secretary of the Regional Board, and any other proper officers or officials of the district are each authorized on behalf of the district to execute one or more appropriations for federal, state, and other grants in aid into accept or reject such grants on behalf of the district and to execute any and all necessary agreements and other documents in connection therewith. David at Prospect Command Pit this 26th day of February 2012. Dan Collin, Chairperson, Board of Education, Regional School District Number 16.
We need a motion for a temporary secretary. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We need another motion for a temporary moderator.
I don't know if I've got a call for moderator tonight's meeting.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. I'm going to introduce Superintendent Tim James, and he's going to be our presenter for the evening.
Good evening. Hope I don't need a microphone, my wife says I usually don't. Everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have a few brief remarks, and then we'll run through the items that were included in this proposal. And first of all, thank you for coming out tonight. I think we're probably had a heat wave today with 23 or something. But I appreciate you coming out in this weather. The safety and well-being of the students, staff, and visitors to Region 16 schools and facilities are of paramount importance. Since the horrific events that unfolded in Newtown in December 2012, Region 16 staff and the Board of Education have dedicated days and weeks to finding solutions that would all but assure those events would not be repeated in our public schools. The following represents the steps that have been taken to date. January 2013, we arranged for a highly qualified company to independently conduct a thorough safety and security audit at each of our schools and the district office. It was important for us to select a company that would have no vested interest in any of the work that would result from that audit, which they do not. School administrators, a member of the Board of Education's Facilities Committee, and our Director of Facilities were present at each audit to answer specific logistical questions about the facilities and to respond to any procedural questions and protocols that were already in place in Region 16. The audit revealed that our schools are safe, but the report included a number of recommendations to be implemented at each school and the district's office. January, February, and March of 2013, the Board of Education prioritized its recommendations and secures cost estimates. The Board examined its operating budget to determine how many of the prioritized recommendations could be achieved immediately, even if it meant postponing other initiatives. That limited amount of work was undertaken and has made a positive difference. April 2013, the state of Connecticut announces the opportunity for school districts to submit school safety and security grant proposals. A reexamination of the audit's recommendations was undertaken, and a grant proposal was prepared and submitted by the July deadline. Region 16 was not awarded any grant dollars in the first round of funding. October 2013, in the second round of funding, Region 16 was awarded approximately $1.1 million, which was the third highest in the state. In order to receive the funds, school districts would be responsible for funding the balance of what was requested and what was awarded. The award also disallowed some of the items requested, which would now have to be the responsibility of the school district. Since June 2013, when the grant was submitted, the cost of some of the security equipment has increased. New technology has also emerged that would be an improvement compared to what we originally submitted in our grant. That technology has been incorporated into our final proposal. November, December 2013, and January 2014, the Board of Education examined each line item of the requested equipment, made some adjustments, and is now prepared to move forward toward funding the equipment that will provide the safest possible schools for our students, staff, and visitors. March 6, 2014, this is the public hearing so the Board of Education can hear comments from all of the citizens of the communities we serve. It is being videotaped and uploaded to our district website, so as many people as possible can be informed about what is being requested. April 10, 2014, taxpayers from Beacon Falls and Prospect will have an opportunity to approve the appropriation of dollars that will allow the Board to achieve its goals related to school safety and security. I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight some of the equipment that is being requested. A list of the requested equipment is available at the rear of the room, and I hope you've taken a copy for your reference and information. If there are specific questions related to the equipment, kindly ask, and we will do our best to respond. So I think at this point, we'll walk through what those requests are, and at some point, we will open that up to questions. There's a microphone in this aisle. We did not do a sign-up sheet because of the numbers of people that are here, but we certainly want people to come up and make comments or ask questions. Dave Langdon, our Director of Facilities, is here tonight. Pam Angine, our Director of Finance, and School Operations is here tonight. So hopefully, between the three of us, we can come up with a response. If we cannot answer your response, we will get that answer, and we will get that answer to you by tomorrow or Monday. In the district office, we're looking to have a duress silent alert with four wireless remote emergency buttons. Those buttons were called panic buttons. I think you've probably read about them. We would have a remote, web client software in all the district schools, a FastPass, which is a rapid identification and tracking system software. It's a FastPass package with a one-year national sexual predator search, as well as remote support and registry. A digital radio system repeater and an antenna system, so we can share radios with our local law enforcement. They would also be getting some of the radios that we're requesting in here, and training for the FastPass. District-wide, in all of our schools, we would be installing window film on all ground-level schools throughout the district. Wherever there would be a sight vision, we would put the dark glass. It is not bulletproof, there's been all kinds of advertisements and claims out there, but it's bullet resistant and it slows down the bullet. Three-day, we have camera-resistant glass also for all of the doors. At Woodland High School, servers, storage, replace existing cameras with digital cameras, will be adding new cameras in places where we currently don't have them. For instance, in some of the stairwells or some near of the rear exits on the interior side. All of these cameras would also be remotely accessible by law enforcement. So as they're rolling up to the scene, either at night or in the day, whatever time of day it is, they can remotely access what's actually happening live at any of our sites. I'm sorry. Just throw something in. Also, at Woodland, we found that in almost all public schools, wherever I've been, the food service entry is problematic. There's a trust factor. You hear the truck, the fry offer guy shows up almost the same time every Tuesday, the doors open, and you let him in. That's no longer going to be acceptable, and until we can get this system in there, they're coming to our main offices, they've got to come in, they've got to get a pass. One of the custodians greets the person at the back of the building, the doors are no longer just opened up as a matter of routine. But this will make it a more technology-safe system. There's an emergency duress system, duress silent alert. Again, those are the remote emergency buttons, and they're going to be in strategic places, but mostly in our main offices. Forty-two-inch LCD security display for the main office, so they can monitor what's happening around the perimeter of the school and on the interior of the school. Front and rear main door, web access control to the main office, front and rear doors, second store, these are all of those. If you're really sure, probably not, just to answer all of them. If you have questions, certainly. Computer lab, two doors, media center, double doors. There are 10 tablets with warranties for the principal, assistant principal, athletic director, and dean of students. The hall monitors are security posts. Police, the main office and the guidance office, wireless video cameras at the main driveway entrance and at the pump house, digital radios, an upgrade to all exterior lighting, links to LED energy conservation and security. Generator in the pump house that's needed for loss of power backup and building safety. This was one of those items that was in our original grant request that the state would not grant, literally. So we decided to put this in. It was at least one time in my short time here that school could have been open in other parts of our two towns, but the pump house was down, and the control for that is on 42 and Oxford. So we had to wait for that to be fixed before we could open up. This would put a generator in that pump house that would keep us operational. We'll be retrofitting exterior doors, finishing some spectator fence, work on the baseball field for some security. I'm trying to highlight these rather than read everything to you. Over at Long River, is that Long River up there? I can't see it yet. Again, the same servers, replace existing cameras with digital cameras, digital radio system repeater, again, the antenna system installation, more digital radios, the food service entry, the silent alarms, the words of duress, LCD displays. Really trying to do the same thing at each of our secondary schools and improve what they have. It would be a great improvement, the Long River, we do have some security cameras here, they're not the digital cameras, and so we would like to update those. We would be replacing 46 single-pane windows to aluminum projected windows, installing a generator for the data center for building security and communications. Be installing a fence around the perimeter of the school in Long River. LED wired security display and a district communication sign as well. We had talked about having a salad board at each of our schools originally. The salad board, if you go to Long River, for example, that second set of doors would also be locked and would have to be unlocked electronically by somebody in the office. It's intended to slow down somebody that's intruding. We looked at that, we looked at the technology, we looked at some different glass now that we will be installing at the entry doors instead, as well as the films. At Community School, I'm sorry, Lower ledge. Again, the servers, replace the existing cameras, the digital radio systems, video intercom system at Lower ledge in the cafeteria hallway school that will have a remote door release, video intercom system, emergency duress and silent alarms, four 42-inch LCD security displays in the main office that would accommodate the cameras. Upgrade all the exterior building lights to LED energy conservation and safety, install an eight-foot fence around the perimeter of the ball field, LED wired security displays, district communication sign, two-way. We hit Community School and Algonquin School. Recompense that those schools will be open for probably at least one more school a year in the remaining quarter of this year. So whatever is installed in there, we did not want to say, gee, we're going to take our chances for a year. That's just not acceptable. But whatever we do install in those two buildings is able to be taken out and brought with us and installed in other buildings. So, and the Community School, the camera system, again, digital radios, so forth, everything we've had in the other schools, same thing with Algonquin. And so the grant total, including bonding costs and so forth, is $1,955,000. The estimated state reimbursement would be about $960,000. The Region 16 grant match would be $612,000. And the estimated additional costs, the things that we requested in the grant that we either not approved by the state in the grant or things that we have since added because there's now technology that was not there when we did the grant last April, in the amount of $383,000. So the estimated total to Region 16 would be $995,000. At this point, we'd be happy if anybody would like to ask questions or make comments. If you would like to do that, if you could kindly come to the microphone, state your name, your address, and we'll do the best that we can to answer any questions or certainly receive your comments.
I'll be pushy. Sorry I was late, I was at a committee meeting at the firehouse, and I have to leave and go right back. Bob Chatfield, 25, Cornwall Avenue. It's no secret that I'm in the three professor schools two or three times a week, sometimes more, and I see kids. And I'm here to support this tonight. And it's not just for the incident. I think this could do more than just solve the incident that maybe they had in Newtown. People in the school keep an eye out what's going out on the grounds outside. This is not the same Beacon Falls in the town of Prospect as it was 35 or 40 years ago. Anytime you turn the TV on at night, all you see is videos that people had to catch somebody doing something. We don't like to, we hope it never happens in Beacon and Prospect. I was at the scene of a mass murder, and it wasn't pretty. And not that that'll ever happen again, and I'm not going to get into a rifle debate, but if a person wants to get into this building, even after you've paid this money, sorry, they're going to do it. But we should deter it. Remember, those of you that have children or grandchildren in the schools, they'll be picking up a convalescent home. Remember that, so you've got to be nice to your kids. On the serious side, there are future. There's too many tragedies around, and we don't want to see it in Region, town of Beacon Falls, or in Prospect. So one thing I would ask the Board, please consider bonding this after July, and then it won't mess up this year's budget, because you won't have a payment due to the following year's budget. We do that all the time. So that's just, again, it's unfortunate that there aren't 50 people here, or there's only 50 people there, the auditorium should be full. But you've got to do a good selling job, because you know people are just going to vote no, vote no. But there are future, again, I want to be, keep being competitive. I do have cameras at Town Hall, I do have cameras down at Public Works Ranch, and we redid the camera system over at the police station on the little disc, which are going to have a little computer disc, right? And it's just the way of life. And what happened in Boston last year, if they didn't have the cameras on that street, that fellow would have never caught these guys. And Woodland is not that far from it. So, any questions? Oh, I fucked somebody.
She objected.
Well, good luck. Any questions? Thank you for time, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
One of the things I did not mention was that the new elementary school in Prospect. All of these same security measures are being planned there, and they will already be reimbursed by the state at a rate of a little over 60%. So that's why we didn't talk about the new school tonight, but we wanted to restore equity across the district in all of our schools.
Chris Belec, 119, Rice Lane Extension, Beacon Falls. I'm here tonight because I agree with almost everything that Bob said, so I'm going to be very brief compared to what he had to say, but I would like to add a couple of little things. I agree with what Bob said in the fact that everything that we're talking about doing here tonight is not going to prevent a determined assailant from repeating anything that's happened in the past. However, as a former military guy who was a base commander during 9/11, one of the things that I had to personally take care of among my own troops was making sure that I was not the softest available target. And one thing that they teach you in the military is that when a terrorist is looking for a target, they're not going to go after one that is going to make them work a little bit extra hard. They're going to go after the softest available target. And if we're doing things here tonight, and the things that we're talking about, some of the things are very good. There are some extras in there, like putting a generator out of the pump house that we have desperately needed for a long period of time. Helps us in emergency-type situations to be able to utilize this facility to its fullest capacity. So there are extra benefits to the package that we have here tonight, but the biggest benefit that we get is by making sure that we're not the softest target available. And that's all I'll say. Thanks.
Fred Smith, Fort Patricia Terrace, Beacon Falls. First of all, I want to commend you for receiving one of Argers' Grants Award by the State for Security Upgrades. I think you've done a fantastic job in securing quite a bit of the money needed for the upgrades in the school. I think everyone here tonight has seen enough tragedy in schools throughout our country. Then it really hit home, it happened in Newtown, Connecticut. We have an obligation to provide as much as possible a safe and secure learning environment for our students and our staff. They deserve no less. I would hope that the residents of Beacon Falls and Prospect will see it that way and vote yes on this referendum when the day is here. And I thank you very much for all you have done.
Good evening, my name is John Gullis, that's 122 months in a row with Beacon Falls. I see a lot of money being spent on upgrading, replacing cameras, but I don't see the comfort in areas like when the children are getting off the school buses, when they're offloading and getting on the buses, but they pull in. You're assuming that terrorists, whoever's going to hit the school is going to hit it coming in the building, shoot through the doors, outside in the field recess. There seems like a lot of exposure to the kids, and I just think that someone who's putting in cameras should go to securing these areas, like you say. How many kids are exposed when they're getting on off the school buses? How many kids are exposed when they're outside playing in schoolyards? I see this program very wicked in these areas. I think you should reconsider some of the camera expenditures to do more in those areas.
Pat Geary, 31, Lee Road, Prospect. I am a teacher at Long River Middle School. All of my children have gone through Region 16, and presently, I have four grandchildren enrolled in schools in Region 16. So I am fully vested in the safety of the children and the adults of Region 16. But I do have a couple of questions. I also compliment the region and those who prepared the grant in securing such a large amount for the region. I don't think there was a single person who wasn't surprised that Region 16 received the third largest amount in the state. But I'm wondering, when the grant was prepared, did you understand that what wasn't approved in the grant needed to be paid by the residents of the region, the balance? Was that understood?
When we had communication with them and received direction from them. When we had communication with them and received direction from them, those things should have been included. That's what we were told. What I believe happened was when the second round of funding came, they had a finite amount of money. They looked at the merits of each of the grants and they essentially divided up that amount. So the end result was that we would have to fund that, but that was not known upfront.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that, actually, that it was a surprise to you because I think most citizens were also surprised to find that we were gonna be talking about bonding for nine hundred thousand dollars. You answered one of my questions already about Community and Algonquin and why the money was being put there, so I'm glad to hear that that'll go to the new school. What about the district office? I know you still haven't decided where that will be, but can that equipment also be moved to wherever the new office is?
Yes, it can. Even some of the equipment from Community and Algonquin, we can disperse it however we see needed. If we needed a Woodland, we need a Deppel, but wherever we need it. The board on Wednesday evening, the twelfth, will be discussing the district office. It's time, we believe, to begin moving forward that planning process, though we obviously can't do anything until after the new elementary school opens, but we'd like to be prepared.
Okay.
Yes, everything will be portable that we're planning and can be placed anywhere we'd like to do.
Okay. And my other question really regards to the procedure of the board. For the past, I don't know how many years, the Board of Education, Region sixteen, has returned to the towns monies every year. And I'm wondering if that is the plan also for this year. I don't know if you've decided that. I don't know if you're aware of, if you have decided how much money will be going back to the towns, but my suggestion would be, in place of doing that, I would like to see the Board of Education keep that money, Region sixteen keep that money, and reduce the amount of bonding by whatever monies you would have given back to the towns. I think that would be helpful to the taxpayers. But you've done a great job in covering every area imaginable, I think, with the grant. Thank you.
Joe Rock, here you go. Forty-two Bonner Street, Beacon Falls. I don't have any problem with the presentation of the money or the bond. That's not an issue. I do reiterate what Bob Chatfield said, to wait until after July one, so it doesn't mess around the budgets of the towns until next year. My only question is this as far as the security is concerned. What steps, what are we implementing as far as the staff situation? All of this is technological. All of this is cameras and videos. Most of this stuff is averted or addressed at a staff level. So are we training staff? Are we communicating best practices, all that kind of stuff? So that's my question.
That's a good question. I'm gonna rely, I think, on our local law enforcement to help us with that. I've got about four schools that I contact that I respect. We're all talking about the same thing. What kind of training can we do at less expensive, if we do it as a group? So we're researching all that, but it will be done by professionals in the field and not by a book or by an article and so forth, because we want to make this comprehensive as we can.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for having this meeting. It means a lot to a lot of the parents here. Some of my questions, I worked down in Newtown, Sandy Hook, so a lot of my customers and employees were affected. So, and I see a lot of the parents every day, so it's pretty tough this year.
Can you just say your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. From the Good Samaritan, Seventh Quarter Road, Prospect.
Thank you.
I see a lot of the parents every day. My son started school this year, so as you can imagine, my anxiety and stress level rose a little bit, so that's where some of my questions are coming from. I agree with the other gentleman who had mentioned about on and off the bus. The one thing I noticed, there are some, currently at current Algonquin Elementary School, there is some security on the front doors. I don't personally think it's adequate, so I appreciate that we're doing some things for the remaining school year while it is still in operation. However, the on and off transition in midday, it's pretty much open access to the school. And I don't want to make an assumption, but it says front main office doors, web-based access-controlled main office. What does that mean? Is that additional security for the door locks? What does that mean?
Yeah, essentially what that means is that the doors will be off in other areas that we want to maintain a higher security level. The doors will be locked at all times and you need a card swipe to get in.
Okay. Isn't there a card swipe currently?
There is on the exterior door, but if someone were to get in the exterior door, we'd wanna make sure that certain areas of that building are more secure. For example, the main office where a lot of the communication and other things would have to happen. One of the things we want to do is delay anybody from getting to that area, so making that door locked at all times. Because if, for example, let's say someone were to get past the front door, having a secretary have to get out of a desk and try to lock the door would just add additional time to them being able to alert other people in the building and to take other steps. So what we want to do is secure main offices, so to get into a main office, someone would have to dash in and dash out. Is essentially what would happen.
Okay, so then one final question. Is there anything gonna be done on the main? I see the food service entrance. Is there anything gonna be done on the main entry doors to do any additional security on the locks at this point for the existing Algonquin Elementary School?
The doors will be upgraded. All the locking mechanisms will be upgraded. As far as the kids getting on and off the bus, we are adding quite a few cameras outside. This doesn't show where all the cameras are gonna be located. We really don't want to put where every camera is. We don't want, you know...
Understood.
For security reasons. But as far as outside here at Woodland, for Laurel Edge, Algonquin, and Community and Long River, there's gonna be plenty of cameras outside where everything will be watched, wherever the playgrounds are, wherever the recess areas are, everything's going to be covered under that. And it will be monitored, and that's where you see all the TVs and stuff that are gonna be mounted inside the main offices. So everything is going to be watched and with the fencing around the perimeter also, that's gonna fortify the security at the playground and all the recess areas right there.
Again, thank you for having this meeting tonight.
Pat Tottenham, 153 Highland Avenue. In regards to the comment about the security cameras being all over the place, is there gonna be a dedicated person keeping an eye on these things? I mean, we're spending all this money on video tracking and whatnot. This can't be a part-time thing where somebody in reality just goes up and looks at the screen. So who is going to be monitoring these monitors throughout the schools to make sure that everything's what we expect it to be?
I don't expect we're gonna be able to have somebody that would be solely dedicated to do that, but I think what our training, the gentleman has before, would be to have specific intervals of time where people would come by, their role would be to do that. And one of the things I've been doing for a hundred years is it takes the village kind of a thing. The staff has got to be trained, whether you are a cafeteria staff, para, a teacher, you are fully responsible for checking those all the time, whatever it happens to be. Exterior doors, if you see it, you don't walk past it if it's open, you close it. And that's gonna be part of the training. I think because of the location, our school secretaries and probably the office aides, certainly the administrators, but we obviously don't have one person that can really monitor all, you know, all those. We wish we did, but we don't.
Excuse me. The servers that you mentioned, the infrastructure that you're putting in, this will all be recorded?
Yes.
And kept on file for a period of time?
Because it's digital, we can do that versus the analog.
Okay. Thank you.
Tottenham. Tottenham, 222 Highland Avenue. Yep.
Hi. David Robinsky, Seventh Quarter Road, Beacon Falls. Couple of questions I have regarding the Sally port. What's listed for, like Long River, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, and Laurel Edge is two thousand dollars. I mean, this day and age, it doesn't seem like you get much of two thousand dollars. And I wanted to see if that was adequate up at those areas. And I don't see anything for the high school except for the web-based door, which would be just the front door. But if somebody was to gain access through the front door, then it seems like they'd have an open reign through this door. And other than that, also my other question was, from your initial assessment, was there anything omitted from the proposal?
Yep.
So this is everything that you've come up with is on the proposal. Forward.
It was recommended to...
Forward, everything that's on here? Okay. And again, like I said, just as far as like the front doors here at the school.
Yeah.
And you have a web-based on the front door, but then if somebody was to gain access past that front door, then what do you have?
What you have probably here for the time being would be locked main offices where they have to be able to swipe through. Do you enjoy working with Sally ports and the glass that's gonna be put up?
Yeah. It's gonna be a, it's not bulletproof. It's a type of glass that is actually not gonna be shattered. It's actually gonna be shattered. You'd be able to put twenty bullets through it. It's gonna slow it down tremendously, but it's not gonna shatter the glass where you're gonna be able to kick the glass in and have access to the building. So this glass that we're putting in all the doors is actually gonna be pretty good. It's getting well-known now and a lot of districts are going towards using this type of glass on the doors.
That's great. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that two thousand dollar figure would be enough to cover those expenses to do that, you know, in the realm of how much things cost. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Aaron Maristey. I live at Seventh Quarter Road, Prospect, Connecticut, right down the street from Algonquin School. As my wife already said, we have our son that just recently started going there. And, you know, since my wife has the pleasure of working in Newtown, you know, I get a lot of stories that come from Newtown as well. Because of that, I looked at that particular situation rather closely in detail in comparing Sandy Oak Elementary to Algonquin in a few ways. Its construction, the security measures that are currently being taken. I can tell you that the first time that I walked to Algonquin, the first thing that I noticed was the front door. Myself being a three-hundred-and-fifty-pound man would not have very much trouble pulling that door open, whether it was locked with a magnetic lock or not. So, I mean, it's that easy. That's a first concern. I understand we're talking about not necessarily bulletproof, but bullet-resistant glass in the doors. At Sandy Oak Elementary School, Alonanza did not shoot the front door to gain access. He shot a window on the side of the front door and gained access that way, you know, right into the main hallway of Sandy Oak Elementary School. That being said, I think we need to also look at those windows as well. And in terms of, you know, the main offices being locked, if you go to Algonquin School, there's a rather large window going into those main offices. If that's a cause for concern in terms of security and keeping that area secure, those windows should really be reinforced as well. I see a lot in this proposal about security measures in terms of surveillance. I really, as a parent, as a citizen, would like to see more in terms of reinforcement, be it, you know, stronger doors, windows, locks, you know, less access, like you mentioned before with the fry hop and the gun. That's very important because I'd rather give police more time to get to the area, get to this school, get to Algonquin, than to watch it on the eleven o'clock news and say, oh, that's how we got in. Cameras are not going to stop somebody from getting into a school. They may help the police officers catch you, but you may be able to see it happen on YouTube or in the news, but it's not going to stop it or prevent it from happening. So that's my two cents. That's what I wanted to come up and say. Also, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for letting me speak this evening and also for getting the grant that you did. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kristi Tottenham, 153 Highland Avenue, Beacon Falls. I also want to say thank you. Not as many people are here today as I had wished, and I do appreciate the district's willingness to tape this and make it available to those parents and community members who can't be here tonight. So thank you. And thank you for clearly the hours and hours and hours of work that you have put into this proposal and really doing what clearly you feel is necessary for the safety and security of our kids. I have two children at the Laurel Edge Elementary School and plan to remain in the district for many years to come. So to see the improvements at all levels provides me with definitely some relief, but I have to say, sitting here and looking at the list, I am alarmed that we need this much and that, you know, my children who need to feel safe and secure in their school environment and me as a parent need to feel that my kids are safe. I just, it's so important that this is passed and that we get all of the improvements that are necessary, not again, you know, just for my relief, but certainly for my children as well. You know, we talk about Newtown, we talk about Newtown and all the families and the children in Newtown, but I can speak personally that my children were very much impacted by what happened in Newtown and especially my daughter. And so to know that there are measures that are gonna be taken soon to ensure her safety and security, I think in the long run really is gonna make a huge difference for her academic, you know, success and her kind of social emotional needs in this whole system. So, thank you.
Christine Mora, want to wait Foxton Court, Beacon Falls. Thank you to the Board of Education for your extensive hours and research that went into this grant. My primary question is, after Newtown, I was concerned about the security, obviously with my three children, two at Long River and one at Laurel Edge. With Laurel Edge supposedly having hallways completed prior to this past September, which are not in place. So when looking at this grant and seeing all the cameras that are needed, is that taken into account that there will be hallways in our school or is that for the buildings that are currently there?
It's taken to... Yeah, it's, well, it's going to be included when the project starts at Laurel Edge as well as what we have in place right now.
Okay. I feel the hallways are an important part of our security, so is there an idea of when those might be completed? Sorry, I'm just, my daughter walks outside to go to the nurse's office and gets interventions and at any time a man could drive down the street, a woman could drive down the street and shoot any child that's walking outside that school. So that's my biggest concern.
I think that the fair statement, and Chris has been working on this night and day, you and I, I think you're gonna have Thanksgiving dinner together. We're coming to closure on it. It's been a struggle, but we do have a signed agreement to bring this to closure. We've been working with Turner Construction already to try to make up for the time that was lost. One of the things we've talked about, it's probably not appropriate for the public hearing, but you're asking, you need to know. We're looking at double shifts, for instance, during the summer, especially where there wouldn't be children there. There will not be disruption to instruction. It'll be completely safe when school is in session, and we're gonna have to make up that time on the times when school is not in session.
Right.
So right now, the plan was that we were hoping to be in the day after school is dismissed, the school year. If I were a betting person, which I'm not, I would suspect it may be sometime in beginning to mid-July at the latest when we can start in ours. Chris, is that fair, you think?
That's probably a good ballpark. I would think so.
So how long will it take to implement the current measures that you guys have on the grant?
Well, upon approval by the taxpayer... but you're asking, we need to know. We're looking at double shifts, for instance, during the summer, especially where there wouldn't be children there. There will not be disruption to instruction. It'll be completely safe when school is, is in session. And we're going to have to make up that time on the times when school is not in session. So right now, the plan was that we were hoping to begin the day after school is dismissed, this school year. If I were a betting person, which I'm not, I would suspect it may be sometime in beginning to, to mid-July at the latest when we can start in earth. Chris, is that fair, you think?
That's probably a good ballpark. I would think so.
So how long will it take to implement the current measures that you guys have on the grant?
Well, upon approval by the taxpayers, we can go ahead and begin ordering those and put in the priority, priority items that, you know, need to be done immediately. The fence, for instance, is not going to be the high priority item around the, around the school. But the interior of the hallways, the cameras that are going to be able to pan as far out as we can get to driveways and so forth, those will be the priorities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Sizer, I live at 45 Hockenblad Drive in Beacon Falls. I'm a parent in the district. I have three kids, obviously. And I want to say thank you to the board for just moving so quickly on this. You know, it's been less than two years and we already have a proposal with some really good ideas, I think. And it was really great to hear positive words from everybody tonight, especially from the leadership of both towns. So thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more question in terms of the implementation of all this. Once it's passed and the work starts, are things going to be going on at the same time throughout the district or are you going to hit one school at a time and?
It'll be going on concurrently.
Okay.
We don't want to waste any time.
Right.
Nelson, I'm a student, 39 cameras drive Prospect. I'm here both as a parent and also from the law enforcement part of it. I have a son here that's a junior and I raised my older son that's already in college and he went through the system here also. I've also been law enforcement 50 years or as a trooper, three years for the town of Prospect. I work very closely and first of all, I want to applaud the whole board for what they were able to obtain for Region 16 and all the research that went behind it. To answer a couple of questions in the crowd. For example, the three schools in, in the town of Prospect, you know, one of the concerns, Long, Algonquin's school is a very big concern for law enforcement over there. The thing you guys have to understand is right now, because we don't have the camera system and the big focus right now, the camera system is because of what happened in Newtown. Okay? When, after Newtown, the research started through law enforcement and that some of the suggestions that came out is to keep people out, we should put gates on the windows. Well, that's against fire code. We should also put fireproof windows. Well, kids can't get out if there's a fire and firemen can't get in if there's a fire inside. So it's a lot of research done throughout this process that Region 16 has come to a conclusion of. For the town of Prospect, to alleviate the parents, at this moment, when, you know, one of the questions was that when the kids are getting off the bus, the camera's going to be for facing towards the buses where a lot of dangers are. From a law enforcement perspective, that's not one of our big, major concerns because we have plenty of adult supervision when the little kids are getting off the bus, number one. Are the cameras going to be out there? Like the gentleman there said, there's going to be cameras there. For security reasons, they're not going to be pointing out where the cameras are. But there's going to be ample protection for the children in, in the town of Prospect and Beacon Falls. The other question was about, there's, there's no double door here at the high school, but there is a security guard that sits right at that front door. And that's where that security guard will have the ability to have that button, the panic button. The panic button would automatically take care of everything else. Okay? So that's a plus for this school. All right? A lot of the cameras have accessibility and we discussed it. And when we did the research and we're doing the planning stages for the new school, the new middle school in Prospect is, we had to go back to an extra three meetings because the cameras weren't to what we were looking for. All right? So a lot of research has been done for the safety of our kids. Now, is it 100% proof that a child's not going to get hurt in our school? No, it's not. And any profession is going to tell you that. Is it a deterrent? Yes, it's a major deterrent. Is it going to give us the information to be able to act? Okay? Are we going to have a, a step up on what's going on at the scene at the time? Yes, a lot more than they did in Newtown, a lot more than it happened in other cities in the United States at this time. Is it going to be something that's going to enhance or save more lives? Yes, definitely. Is it going to save everybody? We don't know that. We don't have that answer. But is it going to keep hopefully 99.9% of the kids safe? Yes, it is. Okay? Right now, since Newtown in the town of Prospect and I think Beacon Falls does the same thing, because we have so little amounts of buses, we have to get our kids a specific routine and timeframe when they have to get to school. So we know the routine that the first kids in our town that get dropped off or picked up from, from home and get dropped off in the mornings, Long River Middle School. Then it goes to community, then to Algonquin, or it goes by the age group. So we start off from, if the officers don't have any calls, they go sit at the first school, then they go to the second school, then the third school. I forget which mom said, Algonquin. You don't see the cops there because the, the way Algonquin is situated, you see the police officers parked on the other side of where the kids are getting off the bus, which is on the other side of the building towards Route 69. And they're around there in that area when they're available. Or that's where they put their cruisers and everything like that, just to, for the parents. And I know it's important, so it was important to me when I was up here. Okay? Is this system a top-notch system? I'm sure in another year we'll acknowledge the way it's going to be. No, it's not going to be 100%. Is it a necessity right now? Absolutely. Okay? The mayor, Mayor Bob Chappio, said that he already has a video system at the town crew, town hall, and at the police department. Yes, we do. And it comes right through my iPhone. So if I need to see what's going on, the mayor's going to yell that and yell over the radio for a police officer. I can see who's yelling at him before I even get there. Okay? I can see what's going on in the police department. I can, and it's the same ability that we're going to be able to have if something was to happen at a school. So if, if a call came in, let's say we're in this school here, something happens tomorrow, we have the ability. If we're traveling from Prospect, we're going to be able to access the videos, live video, whether our either iPhones or our tablets are going to be in the cruisers. So it's a plus to eliminate, eliminate any kind of injuries to the students. I'd support the program 1,000%. I wish that the 45, 50 people that are in the crowd here will go out and spread the word to the rest of the taxpayers in both towns because it's a plus. My kid is going to be graduating in a year and a half out of the school system. So the mentality is, well, he doesn't go to school. I don't care. It's not true. Just like they said before, we're in a, you know, we're in a small town. We raise our kids, we raise each other's kids. I have to worry about the little kids that some of you guys don't have that are bringing up through the school system. Okay? Have I had a long law enforcement career? Have I seen a lot? Yes. Are we going to be able to stop? The glass that he's talking about is not bulletproof glass. It's a glass that's going to, it's not going to break as easy as regular glass that you have right now in the front window. You shoot that with two shots, two gunshots right to the window, all you have to do is walk right through it. The bullets might go through, but the glass won't collapse. It's a deterrent to keep somebody outside for that extra couple of minutes. Okay? That's what it is. And because of all the studies that have been taking place, that's the reason why that is the number one thing to do. The other thing is the tinting of the windows on the first floor, that has a purpose and no cost money, but it has a purpose. We don't want the bad guys to be able to look in to plan their attack. Okay? And again, this is not just for somebody that wants to commit and shoot our children or do the same thing they did in Newtown. This is on a law enforcement perspective. It also has to do with other incidents that take place in both towns. For example, domestic, fighting for the kids. Our job is to keep our, our kids safe at all time. It doesn't have, this is not just for the shootings. It's for everything else that happens in our daily lives. Okay? Are we going to be able to observe what's going on outside the campus? Yes. In terms of, I know the superintendent mentioned about the training. Yes, they are going to have training. Is there going to be, I think the question was, is it going to be an, an assigned person there? I don't see the necessity for that. Cost efficient? I don't want my taxes to go up or another position to look at cameras. However, these cameras are going to be placed in the office or on a plate that's going to be more than one employee. It's not going to be somewhere in somebody's classroom. It's going to be right at that front office when we walk in. The cameras going to, will the, the screens are going to be large enough so it's going to catch you. Once school starts, who's allowed to be walking outside? Okay? So those cameras that are already focused on the outside perimeter, it's going to catch something moving, number one. Okay? The hallways, are we concerned about the hallways from a law enforcement perspective? Yes, I wish we had cameras in every hallway pointed in each direction. Okay? Because if we do have an entry, okay, into the building, we need to know where it is. Okay? Now, right now, per state law, we have to have three, three lockdown drills for each school in our school system. In Prospect, and I don't know how many they do here, in Prospect, we're doing four this year. The last one we did about two weeks ago, we did a lockdown at Algonquin where they were doing, oh, jumper heart. So all these parents were there with their sweatpants and their band, jumping rope with all the little kids at Algonquin. And we pulled, but that's it. We're having a lockdown. We went to the next school and I think it was, oh, it was in between classes at a, a Long River Middle School. Okay? And they go, can we wait another minute and a half? No, pull it right now. Announce it now. Okay? So all these kids are out in the hallway and it took them less than a minute to get into a classroom. Even though they're walking the hallways, every teacher was properly trained to grab kids off the hallways and bringing them into the classroom. And by the time we started doing our inspections, we didn't have anybody in the hallway. Okay? So these preparations that we're doing is for the best interest and the safety of our kids. That's what they're for. Is this system going to enhance it? It's going to be bulletproof? No. But it's going to be 100% more than what we have now. It truly is. Okay? And a lot of research was done with this and I deal a lot with grants and what they went through is a nightmare. And the formula that they were able to obtain, as a taxpayer, you can't beat that formula. The price that it came down to, what they're getting, you can't beat that. Thank you very much, your gentlemen.
Are there any other comments, questions? I'd like to thank you very, very much, all the board, if anything they wanted to, to say. Thank you again for coming tonight. The board will be having a special meeting tomorrow night, literally the last five minutes to authorize the, the disco forward to a, to a referendum vote, probably on April 10th at this point. That certainly will be made known. I do have to tell you with the new legislation, school districts are restricted as to what we may inform the public about a referendum. For instance, we used to send out a single sheet of papers that said, referendum vote, April 10th, 6 a.m., 8 p.m. We're no longer allowed to do that. So getting the word out is going to be quite difficult. It'll probably be relying on our, on our PGOs and our parents and certainly with our, our elected officials to get the word out. So anyway, thank you again very, very much. We appreciate your comments. They will all be taken into consideration. If that dollar amount remains the same, I can assure you that your comments will be considered. We may have to change some priorities. We may have to reduce a little bit so we can do some of the things that you suggested. So thank you for your time and patience.